Order from Monday, December 19th, 2022, City Council Room. All members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of December 5th, 2022. We need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Vashon to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on the motion?
I did notice that I, on one of the motions, I was, uh, was making a motion and seconded, but it seems like it was put in the list, so.
That was under, um...
Page two, the second paragraph.
Right, right. That was correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there. Okay, so, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members... Okay. Next is comments by members of the public. We have first, Anne Shirello, sewer income. And you have two minutes. I'm running a timer.
Thank you. I thought tonight I'd have a few props with me as well, because I haven't seemed to be getting totally, um, through everybody. So I'll pass these out to anybody who wants them. They're how much money we spent on sewer... I'm sorry. That we, the citizens, spent on sewer. These are the user fees for the various years, the last seven years. And if you look at them, you can remember that Laura said they probably would go down a little, because people would be a little bit better about using them, uh, using water and syringe, and so, um, the total amount would go down. And that pretty much happens. It goes down from about, uh, I don't know, 100 and... 1,200,000, it goes down to 1 million, um, and a little bit over a period of seven years. The interesting thing, however, is Laura also told us you should be conservative about income. So the number you put down for your proposed budget should be a conservative guess as to what the income is going to be. So if you look at those, if anybody took one, and you looked at all of that, what number would you predict? And I won't ask anybody to raise their hands, we're not teaching, and that's always embarrassing. But just put it in your head. What number would you be conservatively predicting you should be putting in for the proposed budget? You got it? You remember it? Whatever the number is? Well, for the 23, 24 proposed budget, the number that's put in there is 1.5 million. About 400,000 more than you would expect in that budget for sewer uses. Now, do you think that maybe we're all going to go out and fill our pools and empty them? Fill our pools and empty them?
The timer is up.
Okay. So the first question is explaining that. I can explain why.
The timer is up.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'll leave that with you.
Next, we have Jennifer Burling, shifting of salaries from operation to, um, from operational budget. And you have two minutes, starting now.
So I know the council has been extremely opposed to the idea of comparing the water and sewer budgets at the same time as the operational budget. It is absolutely critical, because they are co-mingled. Um, the recent article in The Chronicle alerted me to the fact that there was a supposed data analysis that had been done in reference to the salary split of the town manager, putting 60% of the town manager's salaries in the water and sewer funds. So I made a public documents request, and apparently there is no such data analysis. And I was told that The Chronicle misreported, and that Mr. Johnson never made that statement, that it was offered in dicta by Stacy. And so there is no document available that would substantiate that split. What I was given, however, was a letter, and it was a request made to the council back in May of 2010. And a paragraph from that letter reads, "I would propose to take the reduced salary and benefit expense and increase the street reconstruction line item by $53,622.58, and increase the sewer and water fund salary benefits by $31,279.84 and $22,342.74," respectively. This method would not change the amount to be raised by taxes in the general fund and give us more needed funds for our reconstruction. We would still have sufficient fees to meet our expenses in the water and sewer funds. Alternatively, we could reduce the amount to be raised by taxes by $53,622.58 in the general fund." This letter is exactly what I've been saying is going on. Money is getting shifted to water and sewer. It's taken away from the general budget, which is...
Time is up.
Thank you. I'll just write a letter to the editors in The Chronicle.
By all means.
Thank you.
Moving on. The next item is the Newport City Downtown Development presentation. We have Rick Ufford... Ufford, right?
Ufford Chase.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was saying Ufford, but Ufford Chase. And you have some...
Sarah Chopper.
Thank you. I knew... Sorry, nobody's...
No, your turn.
Sarah, Sarah Chadburn.
Sarah Chadburn.
Chadburn. I don't know, Frank. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm Sarah Chadburn. I'm the current board chair of Newport Downtown Development. This is Rick Ufford Chase, our current director. NCDV has a board made up of eight individuals, which consists of community members from in and around Newport, as well as business operators in our footprint. Rick is a part-time director, and we also contract with Brian Maravich, who works on our website and social media presence, which Rick will talk about a little later on. This year is focused on building relationships and gaining trust with our downtown businesses. Part of our event development has included planning what we call Winter Saturdays in Newport. A group of young adults, as well as myself and Rick, met monthly beginning in the spring of this year to plan winter events that were geared towards all ages. The majority of the Winter Saturdays events are dances from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Gateway Center. We have food provided by a downtown business each week, as well as an alcohol vendor. The goal is to not only bring business into Newport for the night, but to also allow our downtown businesses to have more exposure at these events. We wanted these events to be affordable, so kids are free, and adults are $10, and this includes food. We also have kids movies upstairs with other activities, truly making this a family event. We held the first Winter Saturday on December 3rd, and we had over 75 people attend. We are also hosting two family-friendly events. This past weekend, we had gingerbread housemaking from Hillmers on Main, cookie decorating from Jocelyn and Sinta's Bake Shop, and ornament making. The event was very well received, and we had over 50 individuals attend, and a lot of sprinkles on the floor. We are hosting these events through the end of February, and we hope to build on this momentum and bring people into Newport during the winter. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick to speak about some of our other committees.
Thank you, Sarah. It's great to be with all of you this evening. Thanks for the invitation. So I'm going to take just a half step back and talk a little bit about what... how Newport City Downtown Development is organized. We have four committees. It's organized around the Main Street America model, so we're mirroring the experience of hundreds of communities across the country. We have four committees. The first one is on marketing and promotions. There's a committee that's called Design. Another committee that's called Economic Development. And a fourth committee that's called Organization, that really focuses on best organizational practices. It's an inward-looking committee. So in the last year, much of our energy has really gone in that first area around marketing and promotion. So that the relationship building that Sarah's described with our downtown businesses and with trying to create these events have really largely been in the service of trying to build up a trust in the community and an activity base that we can then promote in all kinds of ways. So I'm going to pause there and ask if Laura could just show a video that was created for us by Brian Maravich, who has done a lot of our work on social media. And all of our work in that area has really been built on the new website that we reported to you all last year. So we'll have... We'll just do this quick. It's a three-minute video, and then I'll finish up.
What do you think, Rick?
Doesn't appear to be working. So one thing I've always said is, live by technology, die by technology.
Laura, try, maybe, try refreshing.
Oh, we can just make it every minute.
That's it.
Try that.
Hello, everyone. Rick and Sarah, to ask me to think over some of the awesome results we've seen this year on our social media and our website. If we jump right in here, we see that we had over 28,000 users this year at DiscoverNewportVT.com with 64,578 page views. Another number to note here is that the average session duration per visit is 1 minute and 15 seconds. So people are, you know, poking around, and they are spending time at the site. The numbers continue to grow, and we're just really finding really good results here. If we look at how this traffic breaks down just in the United States, we see that we've reached every state in the country as far as visitors to the site. Vermont being the top with over 7,000 users. However, New York, Massachusetts, Virginia, and New Hampshire complete the top five, which is important to sort of pay attention to these regions as we move forward, as they seem to be a lot of interest in our area down there. Our channels where we receive the traffic from overwhelmingly break down between organic and social media. Organic being like Google search results and social media, mostly Facebook at this point. However, we do have a new Instagram page that we worked on this year that I'm going to show you in a moment. So jumping into Facebook, this year we had 253,594 Facebook page reaches. We've only spent money on 34,000 of those page views. So, you know, it shows that the majority of our Facebook page reach is actually organic. But if we jump into our ads, we did run some social media promotions. They were generally $50 to $150. I think $200 was the top ad spend that we spent promoting an event, and that was, again, a Facebook ad. But if we look at, like, one of these results here, we had 1,200 link clicks on our Facebook ad, so we reached 13,000 people for a cost per link click of 11 cents, which is well below what they call the CPC average. So we're doing really great with targeting those ads. We also, again, we have that new social page that was new this year, was the Instagram account. We have 167 followers on there, and that's growing every day. We also developed a nice system for getting people from Instagram to our page, so when they click on the link, it can take them to the different areas of our website, in particular, our events calendar, which is where we're trying to drive more traffic to. And finally, with our newsletter, you'll see that we've... We started in February. We had a 28.1% open rate, but that shot up over the year from up to... into the 40% every single newsletter we sent off since. So that just goes to show that our email is also growing, and people are opening it and clicking on the links. So I hope this is interesting, and I hope everybody enjoyed this little presentation, and have a great evening. Thank you.
So we're pretty thrilled with how that's gone this year. We really started at zero, so if anything was going to feel good, and we've got a lot to celebrate. I meet with Brian every week, and we plot out our social media strategy for the week, and then work on website development if we need to. So in the last year, we've spent... I had the good fortune to inherit about $15,000 or $20,000 of unspent USDA RBDG money that had been designated for promotions and marketing and had lain fallow during the pandemic. And so we picked that money up, and we've done consistent ads in The Chronicle, on Vermont Broadcasting Association, all three stations, the Newport Express, and a number of online media strategies as well. So it's been a really good year for promotions. And then I'll just mention quickly a couple of other areas that we've spent a lot of time on. Part of that USDA RBDG grant was supposed to be dedicated to workforce development. And we partnered with North Country Career Center, and about 10... just over $10,000 went to buying textbooks for their adult education programs in nursing, EMT, that kind of work. And then the last area that I just want to mention is, we've spent a lot of time this year with the Rural Tourism Academy that was brought to us a year ago by Northern Forest Center, an organization that I just can't sing the praises of enough. And that academy has been all about helping us in this community to work together, to think about what sustainable development over time looks like. We started with some projects jointly together to just build confidence with one another. That was starting... We started with building out the new map that I hope you all have seen of the waterfront recreation path, and developing signage, temporary signage for the path. And this fall, we've been working on... Together, we approached USDA and picked up a $60,000 grant this summer that we are working out right now, where we've hired a consultant to develop a comprehensive wayfinding strategy all the way from here to the Canadian border. And so we'll have a design, and now the next step is to go looking for how and how we're going to pay to implement that comprehensive wayfinding strategy that includes the state, the federal government up at Eagle Point, the Bluffside Farm and nonprofits, the city, of course, and some individuals along the path as well. So that's just a quick overview. There's lots more we could talk about. Oh, I know, one last thing I want to mention. This fall, we've... Because of the RTA, the Rural Tourism Academy, we've begun to build relationships with folks from Magog and the surrounding area. So we've now had monthly meetings since September, working on a strategy of trying to develop a promotion that recognizes that Men for Magog is an international destination. Instead of trying to sell it as a US destination or a Canadian destination, we're working together to develop joint strategies on how to market it as a chance to cross the border and experience both sides of the lake. And we'll just pause there and see if you all... Unless you have anything to add, Sarah, we'll just see if you have any questions.
No, so no more.
Actually, partially you already answered one. A lot of... No matter where you look at websites across the country, the outdoor recreation is the big push that everybody in the rural area is doing. So one of my questions was how do we differentiate ourselves, since everybody else is marketing the same thing? And that's probably one of the questions... That's one of the ways, I would assume, that the partnership with Magog.
Absolutely. I mean, so yes, one is the fact that it's a bi-national location. One, of course, is the fact that we're located in one of the prettiest places, for my money, anywhere in the country, much less in New England. So when we talk about trying to build an outdoor, four-season recreation economy, one of the things that we've really come to with the help of the Northern Forest Center this year is a recognition that, actually, we need to use some care, so that we build that economy and that commitment to that outdoor recreation model in a way that doesn't actually put at risk the things that are most important to our community, our community culture, the beauty of this location. We don't want to actually be inundated to the point where we begin to put those things at risk. So a lot of our work is around what they're calling sustainable development, which is to say, moving from the idea that we're doing destination marketing, or even destination management, to destination sustainability. And so the short answer is, you're right, there are a lot of places across New England that are doing that kind of marketing. We think that the area really can be sold for its four-season opportunities.
And I have another question, too, about just culture, and, you know, we don't want too much and things like that. In the 40 years I've been here, I mean, the culture here has changed dramatically. I mean, I was from Vermont and came here, but we have, you know, obviously, people are transient, or, you know, moving, you know, people move where they want to go and stuff. And that it's natural, that's how cultures change. As I say, it's very different now than it was when I first came here. So like, what are we... I'm not quite sure how you put your finger on that. What are we trying to preserve? Because it's natural that things are going to change.
Do you want to try that, or you want me to do it? There's... I think there's a distinction between culture and values. And so when I speak about trying to preserve kind of the culture of the area, what we're really talking about is, how do we preserve the things that have been kind of... The values that have sustained the Northeast Kingdom as a unique place in Vermont and in New England for a very long time? So...
I mean, a lot of that's already gone.
Well, fair enough.
A lot of that...
So I'll just say, I lived in Colorado, on the Front Range of Colorado, for a number of years, and watched what took place in Summit County in northern, you know, up in the mountains in Colorado, as they just lost control of their destination. And so part of... We're just talking about... I mean, the big thing is the kind of stuff that Sarah started us with, right? When we're marketing this area, we are not just trying to reach tourists. We're actually starting with what is going to be attractive to our local residents and give them something to do that is meaningful to them and brings them to this area. And then, my suspicion, our suspicion jointly, is that it will mean a lot of other folks will follow along, that visitors to the area will be attracted in part because locals are wanting to hang out together in these places.
And I'm not opposed to anything you're doing. It's not that. I just, you know, it's... Some of it is really good soundbites, but I'm not, you know, but...
What's underneath it?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
I'm glad you reached out to Magog, because I've always felt a partnership with Magog was vital for the lake, and we do share the international lake, and I'm glad that... So you're meeting with them, you said, weekly?
Monthly.
Monthly?
Monthly.
That's good.
We've done two meetings in person, one in Magog, and we just hosted them here two weeks ago.
That's good.
And then otherwise by Zoom.
That's good. That partnership, I think, is critical also for the area. And I know you've been to the game, but you've been very successful speaking with people who were very pleased with them. Actually, a lot of people are looking forward to the continuation of the music in January.
That's great, yeah. Yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to do, just bring people out. You know, Vermont has long cold winters, and if we can do something to get people out and have it be affordable.
Not as long and cold as they used to be. When I was little, the snow was up to my knees.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Well, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Nice jobs.
It's a presentation for the council. The next item is the Newport Ambulance presentation. We have Jeff here, the ambulance.
I'm Jeff Chonghanson, the executive director of Newport Ambulance, also a paramedic that runs for Newport Ambulance. I'll give you a quick oversight of where we're at. So our calls for service this year for Newport Ambulance were, as of 8 o'clock this morning, we had done 3,003 calls for service. 1,063 of those were emergency calls for the city of Newport. 209 of those 3,000 calls were transports of Newport City residents out of North Country Hospital, either back to their residence, direct M, UBM, another tertiary care. Throughout the year, we've also, you know, we've seen a lot of increase, just like everybody else. Payroll's gone up, our health insurance went up drastically, fuel, medical supplies, same thing that everybody else has seen. We continue throughout the year doing COVID testing at our station. We held different events throughout, down at the Waterfront Plaza. Pomelo set us up at the Dollar Tree a few times. We also did vaccines. We've started doing flu vaccines, in-house COVID vaccines. Anybody that is homebound and not able to get a vaccine, we've gone out to their home and administered vaccines or a COVID test. A lot of that was paid through federal grant monies, which help offset our budget. We are asking for a 9% increase, but we were able, with some of that COVID money, we paid off a brand-new truck at $150,000. We purchased the stretcher mount in there that was over $50,000.
$50,000 for a stretcher?
For the stretching and mount, yeah, they're $52,000.
Patient's extra.
Yeah. And then we had grays repave our driveway, which was buckling and really bad. So we paid for all that with this COVID relief money, so we didn't have to pass that on to the taxpayers. So usually, we take a seven- to 10-year loan out for the trucks, so we won't have a loan for that truck.
And so, the white item in the budget, Laura, I think...
Yep, it's been included for what they gave us, if you go into it.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at it again.
I'd love to find it before you did. On the top, at the second page, Newport Ambulance, 204,000...
You have a contract put in there, it's also...
Yeah, it's in the contract.
204,583 dollars.
204,583.
Council members, questions for the ambulance?
Who dispatches you?
So Newport PD dispatches us. So in that contract, we're including the dispatching fees.
So 41,219 is...
For dispatching.
So you invoice us for dispatching?
Correct. So we get... So our contract price is 163, 364. And then we get charged from Newport PD. And I think our price, like, $87,000. So what we did is, we took that and we divided it by calls. So all of our towns that we cover, all eight towns, we took the total calls, and then that's how we split it up for dispatching. So of course, Newport City is the highest call volume for us.
I'm confused. I need to admit it, I'm confused. So you contract with the city for dispatching, and then...
So the city charges us.
Right.
It's a per-call. So the way the city dispatches is it's on per-call. So they run a four-year running average, and so we get a bill from the city for dispatching. And then what we do is, we take our total call volume, so we divide it by every city, every town we cover. So Derby, they hit 300 and something calls. So we figured out, you know, our 3,000 calls, we divided the 87,000 by that, and then we figured out what town has the calls. So we charge you guys per call.
So we're charging you, and then you're just getting part of the money back?
So, yeah. And then we have to...
It's accountable. Okay. It's a wash.
It's the same thing as our property taxes. We pay property taxes, but we divide it up, and all the towns pay a percentage of it.
Is that the same way that this Newport bill for dispatching? I knew there was...
Yes, they...
Who was chief?
I think we are just... Same thing we go for one.
You bill per-call for dispatching?
Yeah, for every agency. So the difference is, this year, so prior to January 1, Newport Ambulance is getting charged $10,000 across the board. So for the three agencies that they have within Newport Ambulance, they were getting $30,000. So we moved to the fee schedule, which basically, we're charging them for their use of Newport Dispatch. That upped it to almost 90,000, it's $89,000 now for dispatch for Newport Ambulance, between those three agencies. So how Jeff had broken it down was Newport City specifically does this many calls, so it costs this much for them to have dispatch with Newport City, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Other questions?
I just had another kind of generic question on the contract. Can I do that?
Yep, yep. Go ahead.
So on 10-5 and 10-6, it talks about equipment, and it's more curiosity more than anything else, on the contract.
On the contract.
Yeah, 10-4 and 10-5. It talks about if the ambulance service dissolves, if there's no outstanding money on the equipment, then Newport gets the equipment. If there's outstanding, we can buy it.
But, yeah, it's split up between the towns.
Okay, so it's not just Newport?
No, this would be every town, every covered.
Gets the same contract, so...
Yes.
So that would leave... So that's not... So it's really... So that would leave, so that's not, so it's really whoever wants to fight it out can have it?
Yeah.
As opposed to what it says, which Newport can have it?
Yeah, every town gets the same thing. So it would be, you know.
No, that's, you guys don't want anywhere, it's just for my part.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, I would say whoever has the loan on it, you know, like I know when Derby Line had issues, the USDA had loans on everything, so.
Right, there's money, somebody's got to pay it, so, before you can take possession.
One thing is, is we've paid off all of our ambulances, all but one, I think, right now, so.
Well, we still expect you to be around.
Yeah.
I personally don't have any use for an ambulance.
We did just purchase our six ambulance.
Yeah.
You know, our call volume's gone up so much. We're putting about 40,000 miles a year on every, on five ambulances. So with this grant money of buying the six ambulance, we're hoping that reduces some of the mileage on there and reduces some of our maintenance on there.
You house one ambulance, is it in Morgan?
We house one in Morgan, and there's five of them now in Newport.
Five in Newport, but you house the one in Morgan to cover that area?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's a total separate budget.
Right, right, but out of curiosity, I do, so you keep five here?
Yeah, yeah, there's now five up there, and we just rotate them around, just trying to even the mileage out and the wear and tear. And, you know, we have staff four and five at a time before.
And then you have EMTs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, right at the station now?
Yeah, four EMTs, so now there are two crews down in Newport and one in Morgan, and then we have an on-call crew. So if they get busy or go on a transfer, we can pull in. So we have two crews at all times covering 911s, in a perfect world.
Right, right. All different from 40 years ago, when they had nobody at the station, they had to call them in, they'd get to the station, then get to the ambulance, and get to the person's house.
You know, no, we've only given up four mutually calls to all of, from Brighton all the way to Newport this year. That's really, really good. So that, that means, you know, well, the last one we did, we had four trucks on the road, and another call went out in Derby, so Orleans had to come to Derby. Only four, when we do about 40 or so for the other services.
Yeah.
Great. Other questions from, anyway, from the council? Mr. Wilson?
He just brought up a comment, number 11.
On the contract.
If this is up for approval, you've got the agreement from 1 January '22 to December 31, '22.
Okay.
It should be 23.
Should be 23.
Signed it.
Yeah.
You can change that. I've got the originals right here.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Cutting pace of the contract.
Well, I know the city manager has a role signs for the city.
Yeah.
But make sure it's corrected before you sign on there.
I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. So this is something that we can vote on at the next meeting, right? Because we didn't have the word "vote" tonight, we just had presentation.
True.
So we can have this on the next agenda to vote on this contract.
Yeah, it's in the budget.
It's in the budget, so, but yeah, we'll do that at the next meeting.
I'll do that. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
August Mayor, Mr. Johnson said 40,000 a year for the ambulance, is that for the entire fleet, or is that per ambulance? Is that per truck?
What was the question?
I think Mr. Johnson said that for 40,000, I think he said, he puts 40,000 miles a year on the ambulances, is that per truck or per fleet?
Per mileage?
Yeah.
Uh, we do about 40,000 per truck.
Per truck.
Per ambulance. Yeah. Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, is there a copy of the contract, or is it online?
It is online.
It is online.
Yeah. If you need it later, just email me, and I'll send it to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Moving on. The next item is the general fund budget review by the city council, and a possible vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad that we approved the general fund budget.
Ooh, a motion made. Seconded, made seconded. Now it's for the council discussion. There were some questions at the last, since there's a motion, the second, there were questions that were asked at the last meeting. We have one that Tom Bernier answered, that was asked of him. The question was, whose salaries and what percentage are covered under admin salaries? The public works admin salary line item covers 34% of the director of public works and 15% administrative assistance. That was his answer to that question. The next was for the chief, who answered questions. He was asked questions, and he put up the answers in writing. The first question was, Stone Garden revenue has been zeroed. Would like to find out what happened, what's happening with that. And his answer is, Stone Garden is a grant that we do not account for in the budget and is not guaranteed for year to year. The next question was USDA equipment grant for another 29K in the actuals of 2021 that has disappeared. This was the second part of a USDA grant, USDA equipment grant that replaced all of the officers' portable radios that were not replaced in the first cycle of the grant money. The next one was, there is VDTF, which I don't know in terms of revenue what that means, but it was 85K back in 2021, which has been basically pound div zero. The answer is VF, VDTF stands for Vermont Drug Task Force. Again, this is a grant-planted position that is renewed yearly. We do not account for grants in the budget and is not guaranteed from year to year. And then the next question was, I noticed the health insurance in the admin, which would be for the chief, is 24.42%, while the same health insurance, I believe, for the patrolman is 28.79% increase. I would like to know why there is that difference, that we're paying for more for the patrolman's health insurance than the chief's. The answer is, there's a lot of patrol officers, and sometimes staffing changes occur, and they can elect to have different plans, individual or family. It varies from year to year, and we only know for certain six months of the budget, because insurance is reset every January 1. Then another question was, also dispatch, the increase was 28.38%, as opposed to the chief's 24%. The answer was the same as the above answer. And then, the final question that was asked of the chief, I just don't, I just don't know, do the dispatchers wear uniforms even if they don't go out on the street? The chief's answer, yes, they wear a navy-colored polo shirt with the last name and Newport Communications emblem with khaki or black-colored pants. They are also provided a quarter-zip long-sleeve shirt for the winter months. So those were the answers to the questions that were raised at the last meeting. And then, we have the, does the council have any, since there was a motion and a second to accept the budget, before we do that, does the council have any additional questions, comments on the budget? Does the council have any changes to the budget, additions, deletions to the budget? I want to put that out there. So there are no questions from the council or anything on the budget? You're with the budget that's being presented and the changes. Okay. We have a motion and a second, and we have discussion. Yes, you have two minutes to make a comment only. We're not going to go into questions and answers. You can make a comment only.
Well, with respect to the city manager's percentages, 25, 35% into sewer and water. Every ex-employee, every ex-councilman that I mention that to absolutely laughs at me when I say that that is the percentage that is being claimed. You would have to think that the, that 60% would represent three days on average of every five days of her work. And if you look at things like her description for her job, the water and sewage is only mentioned once with respect to collecting delinquent fees. With respect, and I'm appalled that you're not interested in learning these things and want to limit us to two minutes. The second thing is, I made the calculations on the Tom's division, where he, 60% of some of his employees' wages are being paid by water and sewage. And the calculations from one year, one fiscal year, are an average of 5% of their work is in water and sewage. You know exactly how much it is, because there are time sheets, and you should be charging water and sewage accordingly, not by some percentage. And if they're only working 5% in water and sewage, then we shouldn't be paying in water and sewage for all of their benefits. We should be paying for 5% of their benefits, and the city should be paying for the rest of them. I mentioned what's happening here. The budget.
Time is up.
I need an answer to one further question, which was the one I posed to Laura about how she could possibly, how she could possibly claim that we're going to have a sewage income next year of 1.5 million, when we bring in every year 1 million. I want an answer to that question.
No, it's only for comments.
No, it's for answers.
No.
It's a critical answer.
Nope, your time is up.
Well, it'll be asked in the next two minutes, next time, in the next two minutes, next time, and the next two minutes, next time, in opening comments, until we have a year's worth of them. We could get it done now, and we could be done with it, but you'd rather do this.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, there is a question that was raised that I did not hear in your list of answers, and that was, how much of Mr. Johnson's salary is being shifted to water and sewer? At the last meeting, Mr. Johnson said that, or two meetings ago, I think, Mr. Johnson said that he was already at 15%, and the shift was for 10%. Ms. Dolgan's letter made it sound as though there was an additional 25%. When we asked Ms. Dolgan, she said that she was not in a position to answer the question, she needed to look at her records. A subsequent public documents request revealed that Mr. Johnson is actually currently at 23%. So he's stating that 25% of his time is used in water and sewer, which would indicate a shift of 2%, but the city budget is showing that it's going down to a negative 5%. So clearly, it's more than 2%. So I don't think any of the council members really understand what that, what's going on there, and I guess you're ready to vote without understanding it.
Thank you.
And really, the issue is, why is all of this important? It's important for a variety of reasons, one of which was mentioned in Trish Engle's article in Chronicle, which was based on the discussion that she had with some of the city admin staff, which was that it was a way, putting large quantities of expenses into that account, water and sewage, which none of us get to look at, and you don't vote on, that it was a way of getting money from the nonprofits. That may be true, and there are certainly some questions to be asked around that, but it's also a way of extricating a lot of extra money from the businesses in town. So for those businesses who are heavy water users, and there's one sitting in this room, then there are some real questions, because they are being charged disproportionately. That's true for apartment owners, it's true for Columbia Products, it's true for any other businesses who are big users. They are paying a bigger percentage than they should be, if we're looking at equity here, equity. It's not equitable, equitable, which I could talk. It's really a concern. The other thing is, if you take money from the budget, stick it in water and sewer, it makes the budget that you're all about to vote on look less. But that's fake, because we're still paying it anyway.
Yeah.
But we're not getting to see it.
Yeah.
That's why this is important. And I'm really sorry that you don't think it's important, and apparently you don't.
Any questions from the council? Other questions? Then if there are no other questions or comments, we had a motion and a second, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the percentage increase?
2.56%.
And that just, Mr. Mayor, that's just for the municipal side? That's not the education side?
That's just the municipal side.
Mr. Mayor, what department was the highest cost driver, do you know offhand?
You know, it's on our website, Chris, and if you want to take a look at that and call me. I'm here all day tomorrow.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, two more?
I think it's 2.6.
Oh, I was looking at this today.
Yeah, we put in the passive insurance.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I mean, what, what does that mean for taxpayer, so far, the dollar amount? Oh, I can't see, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You take a look at this and give me a call tomorrow.
Okay, so it's 2.60.
And this is what people are paying right now.
Okay.
And.
The 1 point? Okay.
Based on a grand list of 321. The anticipated tax rate is expected to be 1.3530.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
And the grand list?
That could go up.
Could go up. Can always go down, but the odds favor always grows every year by a small amount. So that does, that's why if, oh, Laura took the budget up.
Oh, I can put it back up.
That's why, if you look at this, we had based last year's budget at 131.1, 1.3187, but with the grand list, it came in at 1.3184. It's not that, you know, it's just a little, but it just shows, you know, the grand list growing. And so we, in the past budgets, in all my years of being on here, we used to base, try to do some analysis, try to figure out and put in an estimated grand list. We no longer do that. We use the actual grand list every year for accuracy, as far as your, the grand list goes. We don't put in an estimated grand list, because that's what we used to do way back in budgeting.
Well, you use the current grand list.
Correct.
At the time of budgeting.
At the time of budgeting, right.
Thank you, liar, may you.
Right, but what happened is, we used to try to estimate what the grand list might be, and we decided that was not, that's not very good accounting to do that.
No.
Just like grant money, it's not good accounting to put grant income in your budget if you know it may not come in, but things like that. So we had them, the budget is passed.
But, and we're on to.
We'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, how much money are you moving out of this budget into water and sewer? What's the total monetary amount that's being moved, shifted, in salaries alone?
We've already voted on the item.
No, you haven't voted on the salaries.
We voted, we voted on the budget that's been presented. We're moving on.
Chris got to ask, ask the question.
No, we're moving on.
Those numbers.
We're moving on. The next item is the fuel bid pre-buy authorization from Fred's. Laura received an email from Dennis Percy, and this is the main reason why he hadn't contacted her, is I haven't contacted you because the fuel market has been so volatile since summer. You have contacted, you have contacted me at probably the lowest point in the last two months. The fixed prepay for the number two fuel oil is $3.3679, $3.679. The fixed propane price is $2.10. I cannot hold these prices for any length of time, as for example, we have had a swing of 40 cents in one day. You can call me the day of your meeting, and I'll update the price if there's any change. Thank you for the opportunity to bid. So that's basically the reason why they hadn't called for a pre-buy, is because it's been such a volatile market. But I think, if you look at those. But I think, if you look at those prices, I think they're pretty darn good compared to what, I mean, heating oil had jumped up to as high as...
Four seventy.
Four seventy. And I know, I know, that was kerosene. Kerosene, if you had to use kerosene mixture, it was almost eight dollars. And so I think these are good prices.
And I emailed him today and didn't get a response, so that tells me these prices are still in, in play.
So, and on average, if you pre-buy, it generally works out, you know, in all the years of doing pre-buys. I think in the city, only one year did it, it went down, but we were locked in. And all the other years, it's been good for the city to pre-buy. So with that, we would need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We pre-buy with Fred's for twenty-four thousand gallons of fuel at three point six seven eight and sixteen thousand gallons of propane at two point one zero.
It should be three point six seven nine. There's a little typo in right there. But, but no, but we've, so a motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Signed by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just a, just, just a comment. Prices are so volatile, would it be worth putting language in there at a cap of that in case it goes down before you actually make a payment?
You can't do that. You cannot do that. You know, that's one thing they don't allow on a pre-buy.
Well, I'm just saying, she hasn't talked to him today. It could be twenty cents cheaper when she talks to him. And you're, you're putting a specific price in there.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Oh, you're talking, I thought you were talking about.
No, in your, in your language.
Right, I can check to them tomorrow. But like I said, I contacted him today, I didn't get a response.
I know, but I'm just saying in your motion.
No, it could go up tomorrow, so I'm not going to make them up. I'm going with the motion we got from the city manager.
That's true, because it could jump up forty cents and now we've locked in this.
Hell, I locked in at four twenty-five, so I'm already feeling bad.
All right. Motion seconded, all those in favor, aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, is there any other supplier bid?
No.
May, is any, would any of the council be giving, we're going to give up their copy or is that on the website?
I think it's on the website.
Moving on. Did anyone want to give Chris that copy? I made some notes on mine, so I...
I did?
No, that's not what he wants. He wants the Fred's.
Oh, Fred's.
Okay, the next item is to set the two thousand twenty-three regular meeting dates. We have it in front of us. It's just a matter of voting on it and setting the dates for next year.
Mr. Mayor, is, is September eleventh the holiday? I know it's Patriots here.
No, September eleventh is not the holiday. It's September, it's, it's Labor Day, it's the first Monday.
I was just wondering about nine eleven.
That's not, no. Okay, so we have all the dates in front of us. Any other questions? Then we would need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made to approve the two thousand, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting schedule. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Made by Mr. Vachon, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, new business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have any new business?
No.
No new business. Old business, Mr. Johnson.
Well, sort of. Don't forget, I need department head to annual reports right after Christmas.
We're going to get two right after New Year's because two departments collect their data for the calendar year. So they're, they're going to get it to you as soon as possible right after the calendar year closes.
Right after New Year's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Charbonneau, any old business? Mr. Wilson?
None.
Any old business, any old, any old?
No, thank you.
Okay. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty PM. We now need a motion to adjourn at seven thirty PM.